Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Michael Rossi, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call it regular monthly meetings at quarter. It's seven o'clock.
Michael Rossi.
Present.
Mike Newtonson.
Present.
Ellen Dahlgren.
Present.
Eddie Alberino.
Present.
Mike Florio.
Present.
Martin Jaffe.
Present.
Alan Cravitt. Adam Moore.
Here.
Tinsellet Terry.
Here.
Dan Mando. Zach Plurg.
Present.
Beau Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Let's see, I've got.
Alan Cravitt is not here.
Any other full number not here? Okay. Back, I'm gonna put you in the room. Your next, next time. I'll catch you. I try to, I try to make sure that I keep.
Rotation.
Yeah. Okay. Item two minutes, review and approval of the July ten and August fourteen meeting minutes.
The draft of those will be at board with, with you for the next meeting, so that they weren't prepared yet, so. No, they were not, unfortunately.
Okay, so we don't have the minutes?
No.
Okay. Next item is Chair's comments, and I have a couple of comments based on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
The first one is that. Planning and zoning commission twenty-three dash eighteen for three forty-five East Main Street. Zoning regulation amendment to add multi-family adaptive reuse zoning. That didn't get on the agenda, and. In order to make sure that there is no. Problems with this, we're going to need to. We can't vote to put it on the agenda, though. We've talked with the. Applicant, we're gonna table this until the next meeting and get, make sure it's on the agenda. To avoid any legal issue.
Well, I think so. I think the, the public hearing, if then the applicant is in the room, so the public hearing portion could proceed. But any deliberations on PZC twenty-three eighteen or PZC twenty-three nineteen would go to the October sixteenth meeting. Those are within your sixty-five day statutory limits. We would have the time to do it, but my understanding is the applicant would still like to proceed with the public hearing portion. For the landing of the Mars zone, which is PZC twenty-three nineteen, and that is on the agenda. Eighteen, the very, for that close, for the text amendment closed at the last meeting. And so essentially, you would hold the public hearing, close the public hearing, and when you get to deliberations. Note that you would be moving both items to the October sixteenth meeting.
So we don't vote?
Correct.
Nothing on, on eighteen or nineteen?
Okay, sir.
We will vote, might vote closing public hearing.
We can close or keep it open, right?
And just see where Alan is just coming.
Okay. So Alan is here, so you're unseated. Okay. The other one is, we have planning and zoning twenty-three dash twenty-one for eighty-eight West Main Street. If the. This one, we can add to the agenda. And if, this would be under application review. It requires a two-thirds majority vote to put it on the agenda. So we'll get to that in a second, because we also have another one that's twenty-three dash twenty-two, which is the CAM application. That we need to, we'd wanna add back also under application review, and we can do that. So what I would like to do before we go any further is, one at a time, for the planning and zoning. Twenty-three dash twenty-one for eighty-eight Main Street, West Main Street. Site plan, first floor restaurant on the second floor. On a second floor in a two-bedroom apartment. I'd like to move to have that added after item B in application review.
You want that after item B?
After item B. An application review.
I don't see an item B in application.
As item B.
Oh, and add item B.
Add it as item B.
Okay. There any discussion? That's a good point. We have a motion.
Some over.
Okay. That was Martin, okay. Discussion. Okay. In that case, can we? Well, it needs to be a two-thirds vote, so if it's close, we'll do what I will call in the first, to start with, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, it's on the agenda. The next one is twenty-three dash twenty-two, which is CAM application for forty-four A Morgan Park. Demolition and expansion of a deck within the Hundred Book of Ty Wettlands. And I would put this at the end of the. Application review is the last item. Do we have a motion to do that?
What was that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Okay, Eddie made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Um, Mike, where? Okay. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing, motion carries, we've got those added. And with that, I'll quit talking. No, I won't. Next is item four, receipt of applications. We have PZC twenty-three dash twenty-two CAM application. We had it as receipt. We forgot to put it in the other. For forty-four A Morgan Park demolition and expansion of a deck within a hundred feet of the title wetlands. The owner applicant is Karen Worth.
Yes.
I actually got it right, that's good. Is there an agent or applicant here that would like to speak on this?
So I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, absolutely. Okay. You don't have, we aren't going to make you. Okay. Did anybody? Let's see, this one, we did get the comments from the. Get my right screen in here. We did get comments from D, and. So what this is doing is it's to rebuild a larger deck that digs on an existing home. So, does anybody have any questions about it?
I believe Abby has some comments on this.
There, there is a staff report for this. I don't know if you wanna go over that now during receipt?
This is just to receive it, but. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to receive this application.
Make a motion to receive the application.
Second then.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing, motion carries. Okay, we can go to the next one. Receipt of twenty-three dash twenty-three, which is the CAM application for fifty-nine Shore Road, proposing to add a. Partial second story and two additional bedrooms to an existing three-bedroom year-round dwelling. So it'll be five bedrooms, so. Can replace the existing septic system and other associated improvement. Let's see, the owner is John Willna, and the agent is Joe Ren. Do we have an agent or applicant here for this one, thank? Not at the moment, that's okay. I can still entertain a motion to receive.
Sir.
Yep. Okay, so.
All right, I'll second.
You got the second, okay. Eddie and.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Standing, motion carries, thank you. Now we're into the public hearings. Are you still the? So we have. Through the public hearing. PZC twenty-three dash nineteen zoning map amendment, rezone district, subject district to Mars. For three forty-five East Main Street. This is Victorian Village LLC. Under a known. Here, okay. I'm sorry, it's on, yeah. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, good evening Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Scott McNeil. I'm an attorney with Engley Allen Snyder LLP. I am one of Andrea Gomez's colleagues. Andrea, since the last hearing, has gone out on maternity leave.
She had a baby?
Not yet, not yet. I'm hoping that we'll be able to pass on some good news shortly, but, but not yet. But I am here in her absence, and with me tonight are Daniel Ackerman, the representative of Fellow Group. And he's here via Zoom. Mark Petrin, our architect, is also here via Zoom. And Al Wolstrung, our engineer, I believe is here in person.
Good evening.
All right, so I had a few brief remarks I wanted to make to begin the public hearing. I understand last hearing there was a lengthy discussion regarding the project, so I'm going to do my best and not repeat what we already talked about last time. But in, on August twenty-eighth, Attorney Gomez had submitted a memo to the board outlining some of her responses to the requests or comments of the board. At the August hearing, and I just wanted to run through a couple of pushpoints in relation to that. So I believe the memo speaks for itself, but just to quickly hit the highlights. The first would be regarding the precedent, the questions regarding whether or not precedent would be set by any potential approval of rezoning the property to Mars. This would not be an issue on no precedent would be created by an approval of this application by the board. When working on a rezoning, the commission is exercising a legislative and not a judicial function. And each application stands on its own when it's before the board. So there are no concerns from a legal perspective about creating precedent by granting a rezoning application such as this. I'd also like to point out the commission's purview when acting on a proposed zoning map amendment. Connecticut law states that the commission should consider, when dealing with a zone, a proposed zone change. One, if it is in accord with the comprehensive plan of zone, of rezoning. Two, if it furthers the goals of town's POCD. And three, if it's reasonably related to the police power purposes. In Connecticut general statute, section eight point two. Through our original application package and through Attorney Gomez's comments at the last hearing, we explained how our application conforms with these requirements. But I would note that the commission's broad discretion in acting on these applications is not limitless. Cannot be illegal, arbitrary, or an abusive discretion when deciding upon the application. As such, the commission cannot deny an application simply based on the tool that is being used, in our case, a floating zone. This would be an illegal abuse of the commission's discretion. Next, I'd like to turn to the planning, plan of conservation and development. Andrea's memo highlights several of the ways that our application furthers the goals of POCD. It's also worth noting that despite the POCD's encouragement for presidential developments in areas that are not fronting Route One, the current use of the property is residential. The only new building development that will be on the lot is two hundred forty feet off of the frontage of Route One. And the remaining residential buildings that are closer to the frontage of Route One will be remaining in place, albeit significantly renovated. And will be a much better look on the frontage of Route One. The benefits of redeveloping this site in accordance with the Mars zone significantly outweigh the single POCD goal of encouraging and not mandating presidential uses beyond the Route One frontage. And the last point I'd like to make is regarding the existing Victorian Village residents, which were delivered, discussed during last month's public hearing. It is important to note that this concern does not have a bearing on the application before the commission for a text amendment and rezoning. But with that being said, we want to reiterate the applicant's commitment to and intention. To work with the existing residents of Victorian Village to the extent possible and within the structures of Fair Housing Act. To ensure that all existing residents have the options to remain at the site as it is redeveloped. With that, I'll thank the commission for its time, and I will turn it back to Mr. Chairman and the commission for any questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, after any questions from the commission?
I think one, I can't find the information anywhere. On either the town's website nor your information. What are the number of dwelling units that are currently on the property?
So there are fourteen dwelling units that are in the larger buildings on the site. The, or the existing eight buildings on the frontage, there are fourteen one-bedroom units. As for the building that is being demolished, there are, I'm not sure how many dwelling units are in the demolished building off of my notes.
Would be two units demolished in a garage.
This will be two units.
Two units plus a garage.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Oh. I was just reminded, there is correspondence here. Do you, can you go ahead and read that into the record now?
I can read the correspondence record. This is dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And it's reported at the regular meeting on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Dear Commissioners, while Mr. Ackerman and Ms. Gomez say they are going to work with the tenants and try to retain them, all any peters employed otherwise, they couldn't even be bothered. Hosting this meeting.
Will we get some order?
We have to see if I can finish. Their new schematics show our cabin intact, and the one oh six cabin, and yet the engineer said it would be ripped down. Someone's lying. The engineer grew it in despite the fact that it's going to be ripped out. I have my doubts they will retain any of the cabins in the end. I think they are wellings into a false sense of purity sign. Cam and Diana Chase, three forty-five East Main Street, one oh six A.
Thank you. Okay. Now, at this point, is there any questions for the applicant based on the information that was added over the last month? From the commission?
And just, the hearing at this point. Is, concerns the rezoning of the property.
Correct.
Is the contingent upon action on PZC twenty-three dash eighteen.
Right. This is, but this is the rezoning. There any, hearing none, I'll open this up to the public. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak on this application. Please identify yourself for the record. Do we have a sign in chief?
We don't, because on the day, I don't know if we'll be able to.
Okay. You identify the record and state whether you're speaking in favor of the application, in opposition, or just general information about the application. Or anyone who would like to speak on this application? Hearing none. At this point. I would think that we should entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Any discussion? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Staining? Motion carries, thank you. The next public hearing is for twenty-three dash twenty. Special exception. Special exception to permit an accessory apartment for eighty-eight West Main Street, first floor. In a restaurant, a first-floor restaurant and on second floor, a two-bedroom apartment. I think that's the way it's structured. Is there an agent or applicant here?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeffrey Beatty. I'm an attorney in Gilford. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Can you be close to the microphone, Rick? Yeah?
I can hear you. I can hear you. Very well. Is this better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's quite better.
Jeffrey Beatty for the applicant. I'm office at seven oh five Colosseum Post Road in Gilford. This is a property at eighty-eight West Main Street. It's the site of the former Bank of America branch. And my client has submitted a special permit, special exception permit application. That's before you right now. We've also submitted a site plan application. Which you've added to the agenda. We'll take up later. The special exception permit application is with regard to a two-bedroom accessory apartment that we're proposing to add on the second floor of the building. The proposed use of the first floor is a restaurant, and the second floor will be used as a two-bedroom apartment. Dwelling for, potentially for employees of the proposed restaurant on the first floor. We submitted the application pursuant to section twenty-seven point two point eight of your regulations, which result, which relates to. The special exception permit for a property in the B four zone, which is where this property is located. The, I believe that it implies that the requirement set forth in your regulations, specifically. Section eleven point two point one with regard to the location type, character, and size of the use of the building, and I've submitted a letter. To you, to the commission, that's part of your file already, outlining these points, so I'm just gonna touch on them briefly. So the site is already developed with a building. We're not proposing to do anything substantive to the building. The exterior is gonna be painted. And, and a new roof put on it. We ought, the only improvement that we're proposing to make to the building is installation of a. Structure to enclose the trash container at the back of the premises, but that's really outside of the special exception permit that we're here before you this evening. So the building is in, is, is, is gonna remain as is. The location of the property is on the West Main Street, Maple Avenue, so it's on, you have plenty of access for the tenants who'll be living here. There's sufficient parking. We exceed the parking requirements for this site. The streets serving the, the proposed use are already developed and in existence, and we don't believe that adding the special, the two-bedroom apartment will. Improve, will cause any sort of traffic issues either exiting or entering the property, and certainly won't have a significant impact on, on the traffic along Route One or on Maple Avenue. It's, the, the building itself is of sufficient, the lot itself is of sufficient area and building of sufficient size to accommodate the proposed use. We're not proposing any change to the current landscaping, and this proposed use is in keeping with your plan of conservation and development. The west end area of town has been identified as looking as. An, an area where you may want to increase affordable housing. This is going to be rental property, so it will increase the, the inventory of affordable housing on the west end. Portion of town, which is a goal of the plan of conservation and development. And we're proposing to use the existing connection, continuation, and improvements for the streets. We're not proposing any new. Construction or other activity, either onsite or offsite, to, to accommodate this use. And the architectural plans that were submitted in connection with this application again show that there's very little in the way of exterior. There's no substantive exterior improvements. It's all aesthetic to make the building here more presentable for the proposed use of the restaurant and as a dwelling. So for those reasons, we respectfully request, we'd be happy to answer any questions. But we respectfully request that you consider approving our application for the special exception permit to allow a two-bedroom accessory apartment on this subject.
Can I start with the, I have a question to what you just said. Is this going to be deed restricted as an affordable housing unit, or is it? Is it just a regular apartment?
It's just a regular apartment.
Okay. No one to clarify, thank you. Wait, may I ask some questions?
No, that's.
All right, so you wanna put a restaurant in the first floor, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the second floor. What are you gonna, I, I don't, did you meet with the fire marshal?
The fire marshal has reviewed the plans, and my understanding is that they have no objections.
Did, are they putting? Fire, fire retarded sheet, sheet rock on top? And the, and the, and retard, oncel systems for a building for a.
That, that, yeah, that's part of the building.
Well, I just, I'm just curious if you're gonna put an apartment above it. He says you're not gonna do it.
Well, that's why he asked the fire marshal, did the, went to the fire marshal.
I, I have Wayne Garrick, our architect here, who would be better able to answer that.
I'm just curious.
Sure.
For.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wayne Garrick. I'm an architect. My office is located at two ninety-one Whitney Avenue in New Haven. To respond to your question. There are, actually by code. Two use groups, actually three, in this building.
I was just curious.
Restaurant is use group A. A, the apartment is use group R. That by code. Without a sprinkler system, which we're not required to have. We have designed the project so that there will be a two-hour fire separation between the restaurant level and the apartment above. Naturally, the range would have an ancels.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious, you know, what apartment, what?
In addition, the other aspect we've designed into this project, with safety in mind, of course. Is the apartment doesn't share its staircase from the second floor to grade with the restaurant exit or the basement exit. It has its own single to begress. So that actually provides much safer. Means of egress for the people in the apartment than if it had a shared staircase with the other uses of the building. We've also increased the number of exits from the restaurant. There are two means of egress which are required from the restaurant. But because of the drive-up tower, actually, it provided a unique situation for us. Where we actually had an exit from the kitchen itself immediately to the exterior as an added form of safety. And the drive-up teller actually provides a covered way to the trash enclosure that we've proposed for the project.
I know it was not a purview. I was just, just asking.
I like to talk about this.
Any other, any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So when you said that it, the special exception will meet POCD goals. By adding, what we're looking for in this town is more affordable housing. I just wanted to just clarify. What chairperson Rossi said that there is no like official, it's only a two-bedroom apartment, so it's not actually a board meeting that POCD goal of affordable housing under the.
That's true, although it does increase the amount of housing.
Okay, but it's not meeting the POCD.
It wasn't, if I gave that impression, I apologize. It was designed to include the amount of housing in the last.
Would you have a question, Ellen? Any other questions from the commission?
The only thing that I would add is that the, we are proposing the installation of a new septic system, which has been submitted to the State Department of Health for its review, and they've approved it. And I believe that approval is also part of your file. I just wanted to point that out. So it's designed to accommodate. If the commission will approve the special exception permit to accommodate not only the restaurant, but the two-bedroom apartment on second.
At this time, then, I would like to open this up to members of the public. If anyone in the public would like to speak. Please come forward again, as I said in the last one. Identify yourself for the record, and then also say whether you're speaking in favor of, in opposition to, or just general information.
I live on, my name is Frank Stone, and I live on fourteen Maple Ave. And I was just wondering, how many square feet is this restaurant gonna be, and how many people are, is it gonna hold? That we say that apartment is enough there.
The restaurant is thirty-five hundred square feet. We're required, I believe, I don't have my exact notes in front of me, to have twenty-seven spaces for the restaurant. We have twenty-nine plus a loading space. And the restaurant, by your regulations, cannot have more than sixty patrons at any one time, and it's designed for six. And if you review our floor plans, it's not that large of a space. Believe it or not, by the time we've developed EDA restaurants, an entry, the waiting area, seating, and kitchen area.
How many people could hold? How many tables?
Sixteen.
Because you said twenty-nine parking spaces, that come to twenty-one before I came here. Where are the rest of them?
Well, wait, you're supposed to be directing fifteen. Okay, so you're concerned about the number of parking spaces?
Yeah.
Plans that they showed, show the twenty nine parking places.
Correct.
So the, the, the ones that were submitted. So.
I might also add that compared to the bank, we've, uh, up- upgraded to Connecticut state code. The A D A parking spaces as well, uh, there was only one park A D A space there. You now have a required first base being a van space and the second space being an A D A vehicle space, so. Uh, the, the entire layout or the site plan now is compliant with, uh, the state of Connecticut.
So all of the spots, of course, are behind the building, that might be.
Oh, which two are for the apartment?
Here is twenty nine, out of discounted.
So, so that many parking spaces, you judge that by the square footage of the building, not how many people the restaurant hold?
Correct. That's why the regulation grew.
That's the way it is, alright, I'm, I'm just a little worried that if it fills up. And Maple Labs at Dead End Street, so what you're gonna have all day long are people turning around and people driving.
Well.
Hey, I, I see him?
Yeah, you may, I, I, I was a customer in a bank and sometimes that parking lot was full and, and, um.
But restaurants, people are gonna stay.
I'm just saying. Well, I, you know, I mean, yeah, I don't see them going down their street, see they're out there.
Mike, can I speak as, I'm not a member of the commission, so I'm not seated now, but. Uh, speaking as a matter of, of a member of the color. You're confusing two things, what we're dealing with or what the commission is dealing with now is the accessory apartment. The restaurant's in a wild use, so unless you're worried that the accessory apartment is gonna have additional traffic on your road, it's really not. Uh, it's really not an issue for tonight's discussion.
Well, I guess just added, boy, how many tenants upstairs, how many people have a car, but that's, it's added.
Yeah.
No, you, you're speaking as a member of the commission, because during the public hearing, you're, you don't have to be seated to be participating.
But that's the issue we're dealing with now, is if you feel that the additional apartment is gonna generate more traffic, I think it handle that, so that's what we're dealing with tonight.
I know, I don't, I didn't even know.
Thank you, anyone else would like to speak, uh, from the public? Okay, with that, um, any final questions from the commission? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, I think, I think Marty got that back first.
Thank you very much.
Um, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Same, motion carries, public hearing is closed, thank you. Um, we now move on to application review. Um, the first one is, uh. P Z C twenty three twenty, twenty three nineteen zoning map amendment. To rezone the subject property tomorrow's. For thirty five, or three forty five East Main Street. Um. We've been asked to, uh. Payable the discussion on this and deliberate on it next meeting.
I almost continued this until our meeting on October. Sixteen, sixteen, uh, twenty twenty three.
I second that.
At seven P M in the green room of the town hall.
Thank you, I second it. You, you guys, I got any, uh, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I move to continue.
I have to do the same, okay.
Okay, I have to continue, uh, application twenty three eighteen, uh. Which is, uh, the landing of the, of the, um, floating zone. Um, uh, at, uh, three forty five East Main Street to our meeting on October sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah, eighteen is the, the text amendments, uh, in nineteen.
Yeah, that's it, it's the, uh. Uh, application, the text amendment to the, uh, to our regulations. I, I move to continue it to October sixteenth at seven P M in the green room of the town hall.
Go on, I second, second, okay, or Mike, wait a second. Okay, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Abstaining, motion carries, thank you. Um. Let's see, go to. Yeah, so, because, I, I'm, I'm losing track of things here, no. We're on, um, twenty three, twenty, twenty one.
No, you added twenty three twenty one as item B.
We added this as B.
I thought we added item, uh, twenty three eighteen as B.
No, we added this. That's okay, what are we, what are we on?
Yeah.
We're on twenty three twenty one for eighty eight West Main Street, this is the, uh, restaurant. Um. We are now at a point where we can deliberate on this.
Sorry, twenty, I, I thought twenty, the restaurant listed twenty three twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we added twenty three eighteen, which was the amendment.
No, we didn't, we added twenty one, we added twenty.
We just voted on twenty three eighteen, was, wasn't it on the agenda?
No.
No, twenty, twenty three nineteen was on the agenda, twenty three eighteen had been left off. Both items for the purposes of the applicant were to be continued to the October sixteenth for that, for that one.
But you did, you continued it.
Um, and then for eighty eight, P Z C twenty three twenty is the special exception to consider the apartments. For the apartment with the two bedroom apartment and twenty three twenty one is the actual site plan. Uh, so there's two separate actions, you have one staff report that covers both, but there are two separate, uh, motions that would need to go forward.
Okay, so. Um, actually, we probably should do the.
Twenty three twenty one. Make a motion to approve P C Z twenty three twenty one.
Okay.
And that's the cam? Oh, that's the site plan, I'm sorry.
Right, my approval, I mean, do we have a second?
I'll second it. Thank you, Adam.
Any discussion? And, yeah, well.
There were.
For a site plan, you don't need to. You know, as long as it's consistent.
Just a finding consistency.
Right, finding of consistency is all you need for a site plan. Um. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Both. Then, motion carries. Okay, then we go to the special exception permit and accessory apartment. For eighty eight West Main Street, um. This is what the public hearing is about. Okay, so is there, uh, any discussion about this? Um, I will say, um. You know. I, I, I'm a bit too biased, I like to see mixed use in this area. Like, of town, I think that's consistent with the planning and with the plan of conservation and development to have a mixed use.
I, I like to make a motion to approve the special exception. For a two bedroom accessory apartment at eighty eight West Main Street, as shown in plans. Titled improvement location and topographic survey for Michael Chen eighty eight West Main Street, put in Connecticut, prepared by, prepared by Anderson. Engineering Survey and Associate, is dated July fifth, twenty twenty three, and revised through July twelfth. Twenty twenty three with a condition, with condition A and adopt the findings one through five in the staff report.
Okay.
It is, it's, uh, consistent with, well, P O C.
And I'll second what Eddie said.
Easy, Mike.
Okay, a- any, uh, further discussion beyond the, the comment I just made? No, okay, in that case, I would entertain, um, well, I entertain, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Proposal, standing, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go on to, uh. Standing, zoning commission twenty three dash twenty three. Which is the cam application for fifty nine Shore Road. Um. This one, we had, uh, proposing a. Partial second story and two additional bedrooms to an existing three bedroom year round dwelling. Um. Replace the existing septic system and other associated improvement. Um. We've, I, got, we've received this, so now the question is, do you have any, uh, further discussion or is there a motion you would?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty three dash twenty. Three for a second story addition to existing single family home. Fifty nine Shore Road Clinton, as shown on the plan's title, coastal site plan for, for Joseph P. Wellnup. Fifty nine Shore Road map seventy nine, block seventy two, block sixty four, Clint, Connecticut. Prepared by Indigo Land Design L L C, dated August fifteenth with following conditions. Construction materials and debris shall be staged and secured on the land, landward side of the project. And adopt the following findings of fact. The proposed second story condition conforms to di- uh, dimensional standards in the Clinton zoning regulations. As condition, the project is not anticipated to cause any adverse impacts to the coastal resources. And pro- include the future of any water dependent development activity. The pro- proposed application as condition is consistent with C C. S, S, section twenty two A dash.
Thank you.
I'll second.
You second that, thank you. Uh, discussion? I, I only got one question, what, what was the total height of that building?
Yeah, hi, I'm Phil Hayes, uh. Builder on the project that goes through, um, well under thirty five.
Okay, that's the only question.
I don't even.
But, it, it, I, I thought.
It's a single story to gray, so. Yeah, there's a hundred thirty five. Let's see one question.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, comments? Questions? In that case, um, we have a motion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You're opposed? I went too fast with my turn, okay. Um. Both, staying, I mean, okay, passed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have, um. Twenty three dash twenty two, which is the cam application. For forty four A Morgan, uh, park demolition expansion of a deck within the hundred foot tidal wetland. Um. We have the applicant or the owner here, if there's any questions for, for her. Um, would somebody like to make a motion on this first? This is twenty two, twenty three twenty two.
Yeah, and we have a, a staff report.
Yeah. I got it right here, this is the first one, forty four A Morgan, Morgan Park. Right, yeah, okay. Um. Do we have a correspondent? Deep reading?
Yeah, the deep, that, that's coming, we have, we have that.
It's all set?
Yep.
Okay. And, um.
One thing I would, I would recommend is some of the similar findings, so the, the staff report was written prior to deep, um, giving any comments. And we didn't have that, we also didn't have the septic approval to be one hundred A, both of which have come in since the staff report went out. So the things that I would look for, um, would be the, the reference plan and the staff report, because that's the most recent one. That shows the correct dimensions, there's a couple of different staff reports in the record, so we just wanna make sure that the, the one that's showing in the staff report is referenced. And then similarly to fifty nine, uh, shore, the, um. The conformance of the dimensional standards and then the conditions relative to cam, which were conditions two and three in the other staff report could be applied to this one as well.
Okay. Well, here, here or not, um. I, I see, no problem, I, I like to make a motion to, uh, we'll do the campers.
This is the camp.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve P Z C dash twenty three dash twenty two. For forty four A Morgan Park. Demolition expansion of a deck within a hundred foot of the tidal wetlands, okay, and map fifty six. Block sixty four, block fifteen A, owner applicant Karen Warhick, well, alright, and that's, uh. You know.
What's important, again, adding the.
Adding their ecosystem with, with the coastal, with coastal.
The staff report dated, is it September seventh staff?
Is it, yeah.
Correct, the, 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 I can read some findings if you.
Yeah, you, yeah.
So what I would say is that the proposed, uh, deck reconstruction conforms to the dimensional standards of the coverage and zoning regulations. As condition, the project is not anticipated to cause any adverse impacts to coastal resources or include the future of any water dependent development activity. Um, the proposed application has, uh, which right now has no conditions, so the proposed application is consistent with C G S section twenty two A ninety two. If there were any, um, conditions to add on to this, it would just be the, the use of galvanized connectors and appropriate building construction. Um, methods in order to withstand any potential flooding that, that may touch the deck in the future, but otherwise, um. That will be taken care of at the time of the building permits, there's not necessarily any brave conditions as well.
Okay, without condition. You accept that as the move?
I accept that.
Okay, there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Good, hey, um, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, with that then, um, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Standing. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, um, now we're on to administrative discussions. Uh, staff update on the status of development within the transit oriented development overlay district.
So I just wanted to give you an update on the apartments at nine fifteen John Street, so, um, they, I, I did a site inspection. The final site inspection, uh, after as built came in on Friday. And signed up for zoning purposes on a temporary certificate of occupancy, so folks are in, they're moved in, um. I, I will check with Mr. Massimino on how many of the apartments were, are actually occupied right now, the last I heard was thirty out of the, the. Was it forty seven were, were covered, um. There were a couple of minor changes to the site plan from the original approval, one of which had to do with the parking, because the number of units, uh, had been reduced back in twenty twenty two. Through the administrative zoning permit, it's compliant with the current regulations for parking that just went into effect on September first. So I, we did a count and a measuring of every single space out there, so it's all good, um. There are a few outstanding items that need to get done, one of which is they need to provide an updated photometric plan on the lighting when it goes in. And if there's any adjustments that need to be made, um, once they can test at night. When those poles go up, we need to make sure that nothing is spilling off of the property, but otherwise, um, they're, they're generally good to go. There's a few bushes that need to get addressed and some little minor stabilization pieces were attracted over the hydro seating and so that kind of stuff. But, but generally speaking, I'm, as I was driving in tonight, there was somebody leaving the apartment and going for a run, and it was nice to see some activity, so. So that part is going on, um, now that occupancy is in place, the next step is for the development team to come back to staff. And begin to have preliminary discussions about updating, um, the next phase. So they already have the special exception for the sporting complex and, and some of the apartment pieces, but they wanna make some changes to, um. To design and to take a look at how they may want to lay that out a little differently with some more attention to site detail. So there, it's likely that there will be another, um, application coming before you. I don't have an exact time on that, but I would imagine, um, those internal discussions will happen within the next month. And then, um, something over the, the early winter may come your way in terms of applications, so just a, a heads up there, um. And just to refresh your memory, as part of the more recent, um, toto discussion. That road that connects to North High is part of any second phase that goes forward, so some of that traffic concern, I know there's, I'm sure folks have heard. Some of the concerns of the John Street residents and such relative to, uh, potential traffic impacts as things build out there, so. That piece will, would, would get built with the next, the next.
Do they reopen that? They'll reopen.
They'll reopen that piece, actually improve it according to the, in the toto, you had some, on the master plan, um, some improvements to that. And making it a compliant right of way that goes through, so actually building a road, um.
It's pretty, so I, I, I went there tonight, just prior to coming here, and I seen people moving in, a lot of activity. Um, the place is really beautiful, I gotta tell you, and, uh, and we spoke to, um, a gentleman, you know, moving in, moving out. And you say, you know, there's movement and stuff there, but the, uh, and the parking lot is absolutely beautiful, and the end of the street. They got huge signs, do not enter.
They got huge signs, do not enter, um, they they really uh, we we did the whole parking lot. I'd be going by it all the time, but to- tonight, like you said, you're seeing people coming in, going out, a lot of activity, it's nice, and uh.
Is there any word about uh, reconfiguration of eighty one as it comes around the corner there?
So there's been discussion about the potential for a roundabout at that location, um, there's a number of things that would need to be put into place. My understanding is that the engineer for Mr. Massimino has been to the state to have some preliminary conversation. There were, there was a preliminary, very, very preliminary plan that was reviewed by emergency management, uh, D P W. The police chief, the town manager and myself, and and a lot of the emergency management discussion was on the size of the original proposal with the roundabouts. Being too small and the approach didn't take out that ninety degree, didn't soften it at all, so there's um, there was sort of a back to the drawing board. Request on the town's part, um, my understanding is that they began to have that discussion with the state to see what they would like to see. As part of any application and whether there would be state funding for this, I don't have an answer back on those pieces. That's likely to be part of the next conversation when this comes back, but that's not conversation of the next phase, this would come into it. There's also, um, you know, as part of that, in order to make a roundabout work, twenty two high would would be in the way. And so there would be a demolition conversation that would need to take place, that has not happened yet, there is no demolition permit in place, um. These are all very preliminary conversations, and so, once, once we know more about where that's going, well, we'll certainly.
That that road that goes up, when you come around the building, and and it says, you're not answer, that's a one way, correct?
John Street is one way.
That's John Street.
Yes.
Wasn't there a talk of making that a two way at one time? Are they gonna keep it one?
There's been conversation from the neighbors about a request and and discussion about um, a desire to close that off. And only have emergency access at the end of the road and enable two way traffic, there's other considerations that are not, you know, most importantly is the width of John Street. Um, and sightlines as you exit back along to eighty one, so there's more conversation that would need to be had as as part of that right now.
Did they talk about put valves or something?
There there's been discussion during public hearings and and requests from neighbors and such to and the residents that in that neighborhood. To to potentially go down that path, there's been no approval granted for it at this time, so.
Did those other buildings that were recently sold and they started demolishing, but is that gonna be part of that?
If the, if the roundabout were to go forward, and and again, we're still talking in sort of hypotheticals right now. The configuration of the entrance and the master plan for the Toto would need to be amended to include it. Cause right now, your your master plan for the district doesn't have any kind of that traffic improvement and showed those townhomes, um, that were were gonna be built where the the locksmith building is.
Yes.
Um, and so.
Down, right?
That that would, yeah, either way that it had been discussed for reconstruction. On the current master plan, it shows it um, as the townhomes. If a traffic reconfiguration were to happen, there could need to be another master plan amendment to include new properties that have been purchased by the developer. To include into the district and also um, to look at what the configuration looks like in the long term, so there's more, definitely more to come before this.
Thank, thank you very much.
Any other, any other questions about the Toto from members? Thank you, um, with that, we are now at adjournment, can I get a motion? Yes, you may, um, you're having a baby.
No. Uh, the towns coastal uh, resiliency task force, which is meeting with the other four. Uh, coastal towns, um, is doing an information collecting session at the. Um, in the Carter Hall Library on the uh, twenty first. At so, six o'clock, what this will do is enable you to have input. Into the coastal resilience to plan or program that's being developed by these towns uh, in unison. Um, you'll, you'll be able to look at a map and enter information as to opportunities. Or issues or problems that you find with the coastal area that could influence, again, it's uh, important recommendations back. We're talking about Clinton, Westbrook, Old Saybrook and.
And I I don't wanna make another, um, I I was uh, not, you know, I I was just appointed to be. Connecticut Water Advisory Council, so. Um, and we, and they, I asked her, you know, what their goals are in the, in the, I I got, I got all the information. They meet like twice a year, let's see how that goes, you know. But I was pretty excited about that.
So is this drinking water or is this flood control?
It's it's uh, it's the Connecticut Water, so I'm advising, I represent the town of Clinton. Um. She were opposed.
Trying to get you to pull both flow mouses on the car trucks.
With that, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So be it.
Um, all those in favor? And we are adjourned at uh, seven fifty six, thank you.